All right, we're going to get started. All right, good evening. This is the July 20th, 2022 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here.
And I do know that Mr. Cambada will be joining us a little bit late. He is stuck in traffic, is what I'm being told, so. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anyone that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. There is a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and no one did sign up. So in case somebody came in that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda tonight, is welcome to raise your hand or tell me in the audience. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close open forum. We'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second, we have motion by councilmember Dennis, second by councilmember Thede. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, next is presentations. We have three presentations this evening, and really cool ones. And right off the bat, we're going to start with an important one and a neat one. And that is the presentation of the Citizen Life Saving Award to Michael Chernick. And I believe Pete Kerner, our Director of Public Safety, is going to start us. And council, why don't we go down in front? I know the police department and the fire staff are all going to come up behind us. And then we'll listen to Pete from down in front. Pete? Michael and Pam, if you want to come up at the council now.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you. This was an incredible night. I actually, usually I just babble, but I wrote down some notes because, you know, obviously, heart disease runs in my family. I've had my issues. So I was, it's just incredible for everyone to be able to get together and thank each other and show that Pam's walking and doing great. So I just give a quick overview of what occurred and then recognize some of the people. So on May 2nd, at 5:50 PM while shopping at Menards, Pam collapsed after her heart stopped. Michael Chernick, he called 911. He works at Menards, spoke with 911, with Michelle, who is here tonight, and I'll recognize her in a moment. She was able to give him instructions, and he was able to provide CPR. He provided the chest compressions until the police officers arrived. Officers got there pretty quick, and they were able to apply the AED and continue to render aid. Shortly after that, then our firefighter paramedics arrived, and they continued all those life-saving efforts. Pam was transported to the hospital, and amazingly, within a week, she was discharged. So, you know, those first couple of minutes are crucial. We're really focused on the heart-safe community here. Those have kind of been some of our efforts. You had that earlier in the year when we're starting to work towards that designation. So this is a great way to kick that off. But all of our responders, when I talk to them, they're like, I was just doing my job. Yeah, they're doing their job, but professionally, they saved a life. And I know Pam, you would argue with them, that was more than just doing their job. And I know that. So it's an incredible opportunity again for us all to get together. So first, I just want to mention Michelle Swenson. Swanson, Swenson?
Please.
She's hiding in the back.
You're part of this crowd. In the middle, come on in. I'll make myself skinny.
So Michelle answered that first call. She was the calm, the one that gave the CPR instructions. And I know she's not an employee of the city of Cottage Grove, but she's part of our public safety team. So we're honored that Michelle was able to come here with her supervisors and the sheriff, because we all do work well together. But often, the dispatcher, after they do their thing, they're forgotten. They hang up, and they don't hear what happened. So I think it's hugely important for them to be able to be involved and for you guys to meet versus just over the telephone. So next, I just want to recognize our officers that rendered aid. Matt Sorgaard was the first one with the AED. And then Officer Joe Pierre, Officer Mackenzie Foster, Officer Mike McLean, and Officer Torni. Shortly after that, then it was our fire crew. Some of them were not able to make it here tonight, but we do have Acting Captain Brandon Ekren. I had to throw in the acting captain, too, so. But, you know, most importantly, the reason we're here, too, is I wanted to present Michael with the Citizen's Life Saving Award. So I'm going to read that to you. On May 2nd, 2022, you were working at Menards in Cottage Grove when a customer collapsed after her heart stopped. You acted promptly by calling 911, taking instructions from the Washington County Communications Center on how to perform CPR, and provided chest compressions until police officers and firefighters arrived. Those actions were pivotal in saving her life. The victim was transported to the hospital via Cottage Grove ambulance and survived the incident. Because of your prompt action that evening, you undoubtedly helped save her life. Your ability to stay calm and perform CPR quickly and efficiently are to be highly commended, are greatly appreciated by the entire Cottage Grove City Council and public safety staff. So we'll present those to you. Come over. And am I going to put you on the spot if you have anything you'd like to say? Really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I do have letters of commendation for all of you, but we're afterwards, we're going to go to the training room and get some pictures with everyone together. Pam?
I just want to thank Cottage Grove. I want to thank the city of Cottage Grove for doing this, because I really, it means a lot to me. To everybody that helped me that day. You're all my heroes. I really appreciate everything y'all did. And thank you for helping my friend that was with me that day, who, from losing it, afraid I was not going to come out of there. And mostly, I want to thank Mike, because he's my big hero. And I love you. You're great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to just add one thing, because, you know, as mayor, I get to do that sometimes, right? Listen, these guys laugh behind me here. No, I just wanted to, you know, congratulations to you and thank you for stepping in. Because, you know, there's one thing that I always find honorable about being the mayor of Cottage Grove is people wanting to get involved, and they want to help others. I see that quite consistently in this community, and whether it's our public safety that are all around here, or it's just somebody that happens to be working and wants to get involved, somebody that's on the phone, that's giving directions to help you help somebody that needs the help, or calming down the other half that might be concerned right there. So I just wanted to say thank you for getting involved, and thanks to all of you for showing your support for this evening, especially all of our officers, and thank you for all the work that you do. And I will say that if you are going to get sick or something's going to happen, it's Cottage Grove where you want to be, because our people are quick. They get to the scene fast. We have some record times in the state, and we have great people that get involved. So thank you from on behalf of all the council and all of our staff and all the citizens. Thank you. I guess you guys are all going in the training room next, so thank you. Let them clear out there for a minute. He is. Yep, he's down here. While they're clearing out, I'll just mention, as you saw, Councilmember Cambada has now joined us. He made it out of his traffic jam. So welcome. All right, next, under presentations this evening is the South Washington County School District referendum. And I know Julie is going to kind of kick us off here, so we welcome you to the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bailey and council members. Thank you for the invitation to be here. I will just say that that is a really tough act to follow.
Yes.
And we, too, as a school district, are grateful for our partnership with the city of Cottage Grove. And it's nice to be reassured of the fast times, because we know that when there's an emergency, we want to make sure that we can respond as quickly as possible. This evening, I am here as superintendent, along with Dan Pye and our Director of Finance and Operations. And we are going to go through quickly. I know that we attended a meeting with council members. I believe it was February or March, we went through the plan. And as we prepare for our August 9th election, we wanted to just share some final information. So what's on the ballot? First off, as we look at the ballot question, there will be one question on the August 9th. It will be for renovations, additions, construction, including two elementary schools, along with the expansion of all three of our high schools. In addition, there will be improvements to facilities district-wide, and we're looking at purchasing land for future use. As you can imagine, the land is getting bought up quickly, and we need to make sure that as we move east, that we have room for schools. Why August 9th? We've been asked that. We actually were going to be on the ballot February of 2021. And that was because our planning actually started before the pandemic. And so August 9th allows us those three additional months to plan and prepare so that schools could be open for August of 2025. This is just a sample ballot. On this ballot, you'll see that it names out or calls out $462.6 million. The school district certainly realizes that that is a large amount of money and would be the largest bond in the state of Minnesota. I do want to make note, through all of this, as comparisons are made, that White Bear Lake area schools, a school district of 8,700 students, prior to this one being on the ballot, White Bear Lake did successfully pass a $326 million bond with only 8,700 students. And again, that was three years ago in 2019. This information here on the slide just shows early in-person voting, mail-in ballot, regular polling locations. And on minvotes.org, all of that information can be found. What if the bond doesn't pass? Many times, our school district gets asked, what if it doesn't pass? I think the first thing that we know is that we would need to make some extensive boundary changes. And we know when we serve four larger communities and three smaller townships, that that can be really difficult when students have to go from one community to another in order to attend school. We would immediately begin an alternative long-range facility planning process, and we would need to go back and look at all options. We would be returning to voters with a new election, more than likely, February of 2023. And that is because Eastridge High School and all three of our high schools are significantly over capacity, and we need to do something. We would explore temporary portable trailers outside of schools. We would look to the potential of alternative scheduling options, as well as looking at grade configurations and how we organize, and perhaps increasing rental space and additional costs for learning and instruction through those rental spaces. And we would continue. We added a number of staff, both at the high school, middle, and elementary school. But at some point, we can only add so many staff to reduce class size before there are no classrooms available.
Good evening. I'm Dan Pye, Director of Finance and Operations, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the funding aspects of actually school funding in general. So most of our operational dollars comes from state funding. And to put it simply, we use a formula, so much per student. You multiply the number of students by the formula. The formula is adjusted every year, or it can be adjusted every year. The last time they adjusted it, they raised it by 2.45% in year one and 2% in year two. This formula has not kept up with inflation, so every school district now relies on local operating levies, in which we had an election last fall, and it passed. And that was called an operating levy. Levis are for learning, and bonds are for buildings. The levy approval was tied to inflation, which will really help our operations. And people may ask, how can you afford, can you afford to have all these new schools, run all these schools? Well, the schools are coming because we're going to have more students. And if you have more students, you're going to have more operating dollars coming in, because it's based on the number of students multiplied by the formula. However, for school districts, the only way you can build something is to have a bond referendum. There's a few different ways to repair and replace your buildings through long-term facility maintenance. But to construct new, the only way we can really come up with the money is to have a referendum and sell bonds. As you know, bonds allow the district to borrow money, then pays it back over time, which is like a mortgage. And this is the only method that we can have to raise new construction. So any kind of new construction for schools would have to be passed by voters. Construction funding does not take money away from education funding. As I said, if we have more students, then we will have more dollars coming in for general revenue. So as Julie pointed out on the ballot, that the cost of this bond is $462.6 million. That includes financing costs. And as a progressive city, you're well aware of using elders and our financial advisors, and they have to have a bond council, and you have to sell bonds, and that's all the financing costs. But the projects are broken out as follows. The elementary schools were investing $195 million, $1.7 million in early learning, $59 million in the middle schools, $160 million in the high schools, and about $48 million in special education and support sites. Tax impact of the average home, as we last looked from Washington County numbers, in the district, remember, our district covers four cities and various townships, was about $300,000. The tax impact on a $300,000 home in our district would be about $25 a month, or about $305 a year. I think we pass back on to Julie?
Yes, and so the question is, how did we get here? It's always interesting, because sometimes we forget where we've been as we're looking forward. Many times, it's shared, you know, why didn't the district plan ahead? Or you should have thought about that earlier. And so I think just to set the stage, as we look at this bond, back in 2015, we actually had three questions on the ballot. The first question was an operating question. That question was successful. The second question was the bond question that Bill Oltman. And if you recall, that question passed by two or three votes. It was very tight. It was a recount. The third question actually was, for those additions at our high schools, those renovations of our elementary schools. So that was back in 2015. And so what's happened, in addition to those needs still being there, now we're looking forward to 2022, where we have in addition growth needs. So those needs still exist, along with the growth needs. And so you'll see that 2015 is outlined. In 2021, a long-range facility team updated the school board with current and projected enrollment data and housing developments. And the city of Cottage Grove is aware that the school district works hand in hand. As we talk about homes going up, multi-homes, all of that, we have a person on staff that we go back and forth. And so once developments get approved, the school district is made aware, and then we can do our planning. Original task force members reconvened after COVID November of 2021. And you'll see that initially, the board approved the first go-around as it relates to long-range facilities in 2018. And so this was not a rushed process. We actually took a number of years. Even during the COVID years of a pause, there was still work being done behind the scenes. And then March 2022, we presented one facility package to the board, and in April, that package was approved. And with that, these are some of the key visuals. We were asked to put one facility package together. So think about it, for 18,000-plus students, one facility package. It had to be a 10-year plan. We're looking at implementation in 2025. As a school district with all of our communities, we're looking at an additional 8,000 new homes, which would include approximately 3,500 new students. And at that point, we would have 15 schools over capacity if we did nothing. And as we think about addressing the challenges, we're out in the schools all the time, and so we get to see what our spaces look like. And so we wanted to make sure that visually, council members got to see what do our schools look like inside. This is a small closet that is converted to an office space for occupational therapy. These are traditional 1960s schools, and some of you may have attended. They have two straight hallways with one set of restrooms there for use. The important thing to think about, and again, that was on the ballot in 2015, is the more time students spend waiting for the bathroom, the less time they're in classrooms. And if you can imagine, when we have some of these schools at 400 and 500 capacity, and they're exchanging in between specialists or taking a break, and you have two and three and four kids, our classes waiting, each day, that time accumulates. So if it takes 10 to 15 minutes to wait to use the bathroom, times a week, we're talking about 40 to 50 minutes of time. And so one of the renovations, of course, is the additional bathrooms. I'm sure anybody who has driven on 80th has seen the lineup outside of Park High School. This just shows that. You are familiar here on the southern end of the school district with Next Step. We also have Pathways, which is our 18- to 21-year-old programming. Currently, that programming is split into two, a south side and a north side. And our hope is to consolidate that to better meet student needs. Our alternative high school, if you look at our alternative high school, you can see a parking lot space, no green space, and no CTE space. And so we want to make sure that, again, when we think about programming and delivery and supporting students, that those things are in place. This is a snapshot on any given day. This wasn't on any particular day, but you can see, this is Woodbury High School's cafeteria. If you went into any one of our three high schools during lunchtime, you would see many students sitting on the ground, because there simply is not space in the cafeterias. And this is really unbelievable. I have been at Eastridge. I have not experienced this in the hallways, but this is really the way it looks coming downstairs and in hallways. And as I shared, Eastridge is our high school that is the most over capacity.
So with that, we will just talk about some of the components of the plan. On the elementary side, the $195 million. We'll be upgrading infrastructure, improvements like bathrooms and cafeterias in many of the schools. We'll be adding collaborative workspaces in every elementary school. We will also be doing some additions to some of the schools. For instance, Cottage Grove Elementary will have an addition. Gray Cloud will have an addition. We'll be transforming Newport Elementary into an early learning center. We'll be transforming Newport Elementary into an early learning center. We will be constructing a new Crestview Elementary in a central district location. The locations we're looking at are in Cottage Grove, and as we're working on procuring the space, we'll repurpose the current Crestview building for the alternative high school and create a campus between Park and the alternative high school, and also be able to change some of the road patterns so that we can get the congestion off of 80th Street. We'll be constructing a new Pine Hill Elementary. It'll be on the same site. I just drove by in a different district where they did the same exact thing, where they actually kept one school open and built the one next to it while school was still open. So, we know it can be done. And then, this plan for elementary would provide the most minimal attendance boundary changes. Oops. And the early learning part of it, Liberty Ridge Site Two will continue as an early learning center. This last year, we moved the kindergartners up at Liberty Ridge back into the main building, and we made the Site Two all early learning. And then, of course, we'll expand our early learning programming by repurposing Newport Elementary into an early learning center. They'll have early childhood family education, they'll have preschool, pre-K, they'll have early childhood screenings, they'll have early childhood special education, and assessments, evaluations, visits for over 900 students from birth to five years old. At the middle school, it's mainly increasing capacity, especially at Oltman. When we built it, we built it planning to expand when we needed to, and now we're finding that we need to expand it even sooner. We'll be upgrading bathrooms and cafeterias at their schools. We will construct new secured entryways in our middle schools, and we will raise our capacity at each middle school up to 1,400 students. Once again, this plan has the minimal attendance boundary changes. And at the high schools, we are not proposing to build a new high school. We're going to expand the three high schools, so they have capacities of about 2,400 students. We'll have classroom additions, we'll have expanding the cafeterias and the kitchens. We'll be creating online learning space. We started an online school, it's coming this next year. That doesn't mean everybody's sitting at home on school. They're taking one or two classes, so they're still coming to the building. We need a collaborative space for them to learn online. We'll be creating CTE spaces, moving the alternative high school, as I mentioned, over to the current Crestview building, redesign sites at Park and Woodbury to improve traffic flow, and like I said, increase our capacities to about 2,400 at Park, 2,200 at Woodbury, and 2,500 at Eastridge. The special education support sites, we'd be constructing a centrally located district service center next to the new Crestview Elementary campus, which would be centrally located in the district. And then, we would take our current service center, just down the street, the DSC, and make that our new building for our transition students, the ones 18 to 21, that now attend Next Step in Cottage Grove and Pathways in Woodbury. So, that's very exciting for us. With that, we can end our current leases with those spaces. We're going to renovate Central Park. We rent part of that, too, for use by Sowashco Online, adult basic ed and special education. And we're also looking for land to have a satellite spot for our buses. All our buses, 120 regular buses and the 50 special ed buses, are all parked down on the other side of the highway on West Point Douglas Drive. And we'll maintain that spot. We like that spot, but it's just running out of space, and we'll probably put something more north as a satellite space, so we can save money on routes and things like that. And also, we are looking to purchase 120 to 160 acres of land for future use. This land would be enough to actually handle all three schools, a high school, a middle school, and elementary school, not that we're making any plans for, but we just feel now is the time to get the approvals and work with the cities and have the land ready for the next 10 years, after this 10 years. Just a little bit about the projected enrollment. We don't get too deep into the numbers, but I think this graphic shows a lot. Our current capacity is a dark blue. Our projected capacity is the light blue, but more importantly, our projected enrollment is the red. And you can see that we'd be over capacity on all three levels if we did not do anything. With that, I'll turn it back over to Julia. She'll talk about some frequently asked questions.
And the great thing on our district webpage is every question you could possibly have, all the documents are located out there. And so, our projected enrollment is calculated by an internal team. There's a formula. The information can be found online. In addition to those projections, once we know the type of home that's being built, we also need to factor in what we call intra-district transfer requests, which are students who may move between schools. We need to take into consideration special education, along with gifted and talented students and meeting those students' needs, and then our magnet programming from Spanish Immersion, Nuevas Fronteras, as well as the multi-age program at Valley Crossing, which still, students across the district have access to that multi-age program. What is the tax impact? I think Dan answered that question. There's also a misunderstanding that as students come in, there's a belief that school districts get money for schools and bonds. And I truly wish the State Department would give school districts money for bonds, but as Dan shared, bonding and asking the community for dollars is the only way that we can build new construction. And I know Dan talked just a little bit about the tax impact as well. Seems like the process is being rushed. I think I answered that question as we went through. This process has been in place since 2018. And actually, I would say, I would go back to 2015, when we weren't successful with that levy, because those needs continued on. And so, the actual process has been documented pre-pandemic through the pandemic, as well as we went through the last year. And another question we've gotten frequently is the August 9th, and I believe I answered that just in the opening, talking about the months from August, September, October, into the typical November election. We need those three months for planning, so that we can make sure that schools are open by the fall of 2025. And so, that is why we're on the ballot August 9th. We have worked to be transparent in all of our communication, that the school district would be on the ballot at that time. And with that, this is the website. Our communications team has done a fabulous job. They have the impacts for every single school and what schools would get if the bond were successful. So, with that, we will certainly entertain any questions that council members or Mayor Bailey that you may have.
Fantastic. Thank you both for going over the details, because some of the things that I happen to see sometimes out on social media and that you answered those questions, so it's always good to see that. Councilmember Olson, any other question?
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. I realize that the public information campaign is always really challenging. It seems like no matter how many different methods you use and how often you hold meetings and things of that nature, there are always people who struggle to kind of understand the reality of what's going on. One of the things that you mentioned earlier was, you know, levis are for learning and bonds are for building. And I know that there's a lot of confusion out there about that. I don't know what sorts of approach you might be able to take to help alleviate some of that confusion, but some of the comments that I see from people and some of the things that I hear when I talk to people are, well, you know, the school district has been very irresponsible with its money, and X and Y and Z, and the bond rating is not good at the school district. If the school district was a business, they would be out of business. And my response to those folks is, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about kids coming to school, which is the learning part, and you're not talking about the bonding part. But if the school district was a private business, they would be able to charge whatever they chose to charge to provide the service that they provide in order to remain solvent. So, that horse does not, you know, come out of the barn, as far as I'm concerned. A couple of things that I wanted you to address since you're here, and we are on TV with millions of viewers at home, and I want to make sure that they see all of this. You know, we hear a lot about the legislature, and the legislature passes school funding bills, or in the case of 2022, they don't. And we're hopeful that they'll come back for a special session here after the election in August, but there's no guarantee of that. There was a bill that passed the House for $1.15 billion as a portion of the surplus that the state enjoys currently of over $9 billion for school funding, but that's not for building. That's for learning. So, that would have no impact on this number whatsoever. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. The second thing I want to talk about is, historically, in a even year, the legislature does a bonding bill. They did not do one yet this year. Don't know if they will, but historically, they would. Can schools get in on that? Can they get in on those bonding bills, Dan, or not?
No, that's not part of the school funding.
Right.
Repartars. I wish, but they'd be, if you think about, they'd be pretty high bonding bills if all the schools got in, too, and I wonder if that's one reason.
Precisely.
We just had our property appraised for our insurance policy, and I'm sure you guys go through that, too. We're over $1 billion in buildings right now.
Mm-hmm. So, I asked that question because I already knew the answer, but I want the people at home to know that bonding bills at the state legislature are for special projects like the Hero Center next door to this building. But public schools can't get a piece of that pie. So, the only option you have is to go to the voters. The other thing I want to talk about is the value of District 833. Now, I'm biased. I went to 833 schools. I graduated from Park. My kids went to 833 schools. They both graduated from Park. One of them, we weren't so sure about, but she made it, so we're pretty happy with that. But the reality is, a good, solid school district, well-rated, well-thought-of, delivers excellent service, is absolutely critical to having a healthy community. And I think the mayor can talk a little bit more about that, because it's something that I know he believes strongly in as well. The city of Cottage Grove is better because we have 833. People move to this community. One of the reasons we're building houses like we are is because people want to be here, because their kids will get a quality education. 833 is very highly thought of. Additionally, when you have good public schools, your crime rates go down. You have, you know, a whole host of other benefits, because schools get involved in community education and so many other things. I was just at Oltman yesterday to drop my daughter off for a community education class on driver's ed, and they had kids' club stuff going on, and they had basketball camp going on, and so these schools get used year-round. This is not just, hey, we go in September, and we're done in May, and then we mothball those buildings. They are constantly in use, and they are massive contributors to the overall health of a community. And when you don't have good schools, you don't have good communities. Last but not least, facilities. If you want to attract good talent, which I know you do, you want to have great teachers, you want to have really good paraprofessionals, you want to have all those kinds of things, your facilities have to be much more than just adequate. And right now, I think you're kind of struggling along with adequate in many cases, because you've got people learning in closets, for God's sake. If you want healthy schools and healthy communities, you need to have facilities that speak to that. And you can't just say, hey, we're a great school district. It's just like any business. If you walk in the front door and the business is not well-kept, or it's old, and there's, you know, failing infrastructure, or whatever the case might be, you're not as appealing as the person next door who might have a new storefront. The last piece is safety, and I think it's the most important piece. You briefly touched on it in your communication, and I'm wondering if you can just take another minute to talk about the fact that not only are you talking about capacity and those kinds of things, but we all read the news, and we all listen to the radio and go online and hear about terrible things that happen across the country. And if you want to keep kids safe, safe school buildings is a big deal. And I know that many of the facilities that you're planning would have significant upgrades in safety. Can you touch on that just a hair?
Yeah, it's mainly, excuse me, providing secured entrances, because that's really where everything can be controlled. And you may or may not know, some of our middle schools don't, they have a secured entrance, but once someone gets in, they kind of have full reign. And so, we'll readjust those, so that if you went in at some of our other schools, you know that you have to go through a maze to get in, just to make sure that you go through the office before you get into the building. And we'll get that done at those middle schools that don't have the proper secured entry. We'll be looking at, you know, more camera upgrades, things like that. But so much of the safety, it needs everybody's help. As visitors at schools, they see something, you know, let someone know, don't let people in through doors they're not supposed to go into, things like that. But yeah, as part of the bond, we're excited to get those secured entrances, especially like Cottage Grove Middle, Lake Middle School, and Woodbury.
Fantastic. So, again, I just want to say, I appreciate you being here this evening. There's so much good information in this presentation, and I know that people, you know, like to talk about different things that aren't necessarily relevant to the conversation, but if they want to get answers, if there's somebody watching at home, how would you recommend that they do that? Is it best to plug into the website? Is there a phone number they should call? How should they get that?
They can email any one of us. You can email super@soashco.org. We are available. We answer a lot of questions every day. We have another link that people can go online and just fill out, and we will certainly get back to them. But I appreciate your comments. I think the value of education, and I think what we've seen over time is the cost of education has increased, and we're all in competition with each other. What we pay our paraprofessionals, what we pay bus drivers, mechanics, every single bargaining group, we're all in competition together. And I look at South Washington County schools, after being with the district since 1991, and how much we've grown and how much we've changed, and the opportunities, the programs, and the course offerings that our students have access to is first-class. There are so many options for students, and in order to do those things, it costs money. You know, when we were going through budget adjustments, that is an extremely difficult process, because every program has value for a student or a group of students. And so, thank you so much for acknowledging the importance of our school district within the community of Cottage Grove. That's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Cambada.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilmember Olson. Those are all very, very good questions. You know, I spent a good amount of time on Planning Commission before I got to City Council, and what I learned, what I observed most in every project that came up was, you know, we build a road with a 25-year life expectancy. We built this building with a 50-year life expectancy. So, as we invest in infrastructure, we're not looking at what today's needs are. We're looking at what, you know, what the capacity for a road is 10 years from now. And I think in budget, budget planning has, you know, many, many nuances to it, and I do really appreciate you going through kind of where your logic is coming from, through projections, through estimated number of houses, you know, how many children that equates to, you know, per capita, et cetera. So, one question, I made an observation that there must be some attrition or some, you know, like, the elementary school has more kids than the high school. So, like, if everyone just kind of kept moving up in grade, they would be similar. So, do you see kids, you know, moving to specialty schools or, you know, like, moving out of the district? I was just curious about that part. But also, the other thing in crunching the numbers is if we're 18,000 students, you know, 3% or 5% growth means a lot to us, whereas if you're a school district with a few thousand students, it doesn't, you know, it's easier to absorb, you know, 30 or 40 students versus, you know, 500 students. And so, I was just kind of wanting to dig a little deeper into where those students go and how you kind of anticipate where they're coming from as well.
Do you have numbers from student information?
If you're just looking at the graphic, you know, the elementary schools have more grades than the high schools.
Okay.
We actually have more enrollment. The grades get higher as they go up, mainly because, like, St. Ambrose only goes to eighth grade. So, many, many of those kids will move into our system. So, we kind of pick up a lot in ninth grade, and that's when we have a bubble. So we kind of pick up a lot in ninth grade, and that's when we have a bubble. Well, we like to do, we look at enrollment, and I'm kind of an enrollment nerd, and I look at it every day, I tell Julie what enrollment's at right now. But, you know, we look for these bubbles that come through, and in fact, and I, and then what's worse is I find the ones that aren't bubbles, you know? It's like, well, we should be okay now, because, you know, the seventh graders are coming up through here. But generally, what happens in our district is we get a little bump in ninth grade because of basically St. Ambrose. Now, we had our highest enrollment ever in, uh, year, 2000, I'm sorry, 20, 2020, 18,754. Of course, then the pandemic hit, and everybody lost statewide, I believe there was a loss of 60,000, 70,000 students. Of course, we lost some too, but they all went, you know, deprived if they could keep going. I think the privates filled up pretty fast, but, you know, we, we lost maybe 200, and most, like White Bear Lake lost 500, and most districts lost more. Not sure why, but, and now we're just slowly crawling back, and I believe, you know, next year we might get back to our record number again if things keep moving. But we did have a little hiatus in our, in our enrollment growth. Generally, we're going to grow, at least since I've been here, we've grown 1 to 1.5% a year. And like you say, when you multiply that out by the numbers, that's 180 kids. That's how many sections?
That's seven or eight elementary sections, for sure.
That just come naturally, and then with the new housing, more are coming, but I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, that, that did help. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions by council at this point? I'll just mention, thank you again for coming. That's why I wanted to have you come and present to us, because I think it's important. I mean, you've done a great job of keeping the councils, or at least this council, I know, I think you've been to the others too, we're talking to those, keep us informed kind of of what the process is, where the numbers are coming from. And I appreciate the fact that you've got the website and a lot of the, you know, the Q and A questions out there. You know, as somebody who also came up, my entire family, including my kids, and then I've got grandkids that are coming through South Washington County schools, you know, very proud of all the, the years and years of work and dedication to, to our community, and obviously Woodbury and everybody else too. But I also wanted to just make a point, you know, it's funny you were talking about Pine Hill, because that's actually where I went to elementary school. And you look at Pine Hill, and yeah, there was a couple additions, minor, I would say, over the years from, from when I was there. My wife actually used to work there in the office at one point. But you look at what the needs were back when I was in school, to what the needs are today, and how things have changed over the years. But to be frank with you, the schools, those particular schools have not. And when you look at what I believe you're trying to do, is you're trying to modernize schools and make them more efficient. And I do know that a lot of times we do get people that will comment about, well, there seems to be a lot of quote-unquote "waste" out there. You've got, you know, this many people in this building, that many, many in another building. Well, the reality is, you have to, you can't not have a janitor, cannot have lunchperson or whoever in these different buildings. Every building, you have to have somebody. So if you can actually build something that's more efficient, has more capacity, it's less likely you're going to have to do some expansion into the future, at least to the extent of having to build entirely new buildings. And so I think your efforts to try to work on some of these issues with some of these older buildings within our, our school district, I think is, is important to bring up. Second of all, I would just mention, you know, costs aren't getting any cheaper. I know that you're hearing a lot right now because inflation and all that's out there. Well, even before inflation, when you even take our own city as an example, when we first started talking about a community-centered referendum, I think the, the price tag, when it was first discussed and kept getting pushed down, you know, we kept, kept looking at it, looking at it for the future, I think was around 13 to 15 million. And by the time we actually went to a referendum question, it was 42-plus. And so, you know, when you talk about some of the things that you were trying to do back in 2015, that would have taken away the need for such an extensive, inexpensive, rightfully so, expensive bond referendum for this year, that goes to show you, when you delay, and we know that, as a council, we deal with that all the time, you, you, there's always tails that you have to deal with. The, the needs don't go away, they just get pushed down the, down the road farther, and some, at some point, you're going to have to pay the piper. And I, again, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to get it all done, all at once. And then the last thing I'll just mention, because I do see a lot of this out there, and that has to do with Newport Elementary. And I do like the fact that you do explain kind of what the future is of Newport Elementary. So it is still going to be in essence a school. It's going to be repurposed to early childhood education, pre, I think you said Bertha, Bertha Five. So there is, it's still going to be an important part of the school district. And I'm assuming, just so I can ask, from my knowledge, that's, that's for everybody in the district, correct? So I mean, anybody would go there. It's not just Newport, that's going to be there, it's going to be Cottage Grove, Central Park.
Correct. There'll be programming across, from across the district.
Okay.
And the great thing is that the school district will still own the school. Having come here in 1991, I still hear about Grove Elementary School. And I think the great thing is that the school district still owns the school. And so should things change, should needs change, should population change, we have options available. And so I think that we were intentional about making sure that we continue to own that, and it's just a remodel or renovation and a repurpose of the building.
Perfect. And I guess I do have one last thing, and that is, I do also think it's important with the fact that you're trying to plan for the future, even beyond what we're talking about. And what I mean by that is purchasing land. As we've learned recently, by the time the school district comes around, with all due respect, and says, hey, we need a new elementary school, we need some property, pretty much everything is bought up. And that's not just Cottage Grove, that's Woodbury and, and all these surrounding communities. So the fact that you're looking, if this passes, that you're looking to secure funds in advance to plan for the future, I think is, is very important, and you guys should be, that should be acknowledged and appreciated for the fact that you are trying to look well down the road, that should the need arise, that there's actually something already there, and that you're not paying premium dollar for a property that, when you try to get into the core, if there's property left, obviously becomes a challenge. So, anyway. Well, I appreciate you guys coming again tonight, thank you, and good luck with the referendum.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Our third and final presentation this evening is the Night to Unite Proclamation and the Event Overview. And Dan Schoen, our Community Engagement Officer, there we go, I almost said Service Officer, but that's true too, I guess. Community Engagement Officer will walk us through this one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's an honor to be here to talk about Night to Unite 2022. It's going to be the first Tuesday in August, and for those of you that can make it, we are looking forward to you joining us out into the community. And this is just another time to exemplify the great work that is going on in the city of Cottage Grove, in public safety in general, included the services from the entire city. But, you know, Night, the purpose of Night to Unite is just to heighten awareness around the crime and drug prevention, A, that we do, and that we need to do. Generate support for participation in anti-crime efforts, strengthen neighborhood spirit, and police-community partnerships. Send a message to the criminals, basically saying, not here. This is, this is our neighborhoods, this is our town, and we're going to look out for one another, like, as we do in Cottage Grove. Night to Unite, the Police Department, the Fire Department, elected official city staff, visit many gatherings as part of this crime prevention event. We asked our citizens to register by July 26th. As you can see by the picture, we've been doing Night to Unite for quite a few years.
I was going to say, what happened, chief?
Yeah, I don't rec, I don't recognize that officer.
I'm looking at that going, oh my gosh!
I, I want you to all be careful, because we do have some files of pictures of everybody else from many years ago that may or may not be.
You look really good, Pete, I just want you to know that.
Here's a couple of the things that you've, you'll recognize from the past, is the Backpack and Paper Product Campaign, is the Fill the Bag Campaign for our Friends in Need Food Shelf, where we ask folks to collect donated food items. And then also, another option is the Backpack Campaign around paper products, whether it's school supplies, you name it, that we'll bring in and then donate back to the Friends in Need Food Shelf, which is kind of a fun event that happens. We also have the Coloring Contest, sponsored by our Parks and Recreation folks. This is what I mean by the city of Cottage Grove, it's a full participation, participation event, right? I mean, we're going to have our Public Works folks bringing out barricades, so people can have their parties. We have a Parks and Rec program here, willing to sponsor a coloring contest, so folks can actually win a prize. It's not just, just for fun, but they can actually win a shelter rental at Highland Park Splash Pad to throw a little birthday party. You can download that form from the webpage, the city webpage, we're asking that that be turned in. And I apologize, that is my screw-up on the editorial, this is going to be the, the Tuesday before August 2nd, so this is not the correct date, but the, the week before. It's on the webpage, you can download, download all those activities, ideas, a planning worksheet, block party, the coloring contest, and your registration form. And really, I do have to be humble here, I get to talk about it, but you all maybe know Charlene Raymond, who works in our Rutgers Department, at the Police Department. This is one of the projects that she works on, and I got to tell you, the amount of work that she puts into it, in the file, in the spreadsheet, and how she organizes this, so that everybody can get to the parties that, A, they want to go to. We take requests for folks that really want a fire truck to come by, they really want to see the mayor, they want to see Councilmember Olson, they want to see the city administrator, whoever that may be. She organizes all that, and I can't tell you, that is something that is beyond my mental capacity, I really believe that. And so thank you to her. And, you know, after what you saw earlier tonight, I've never been, I've been here for 21 years, I've never worked in a time when we take such an active measure from the mayor, the council, or city administrator especially, to make sure that the citizens know that we're here to serve you. But we also need your help, and we're going to work together. Night to Unite is part of that effort. Thank you all for your support for this event as well.
Fantastic. First of all, if somebody wants to have a party, can they still register? Is that over now?
Mr. Mayor, they can register until Tuesday.
Of this next week?
That's correct.
So I know we're getting down to the wire, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
We are, we are, we actually extended it, because Charlene, and I'll tell you, we're at, I think she told me, we're at about 52 parties? It was either 52 or 58. We were at 40, and I, and both Chief Kerner and I said, hey, that's pretty great, we're, we'll be happy with that. She goes, no, we need to be over 50, because the town is growing, there's new neighborhoods, and they need to know each other. And she's worked hard to make that happen. So we're over 50.
Fantastic. Any questions for Dan on this topic? All right. And Councilmember Olson, we actually have a proclamation that, if you'd be so kind as to read, and then council will need to motion and second to accept and do the proclamation.
Are they going to put the proclamation on the board?
Probably not, unless you have it in there.
Nope. I, I bet I got it right here. Well, I'm not going to say I do. I don't, I don't see it queued up. My apologies.
Okay. I'm going to read it from Dave's laptop instead. That's no problem at all. Okay? Bear with us, technical difficulties. Thank you, David. All right. So this proclamation is for Night to Unite, which takes place on August the 2nd, as previously mentioned by Officer Schoen. Whereas the Minnesota Crime Prevention Association, along with AAA of Minnesota, Iowa, and local law enforcement agencies, are sponsoring a statewide program called Night to Unite on August 2nd, 2022. And whereas, Night to Unite is designed to get to know one another in your neighborhood, build neighborhood involvement, and bring police and communities together, as well as bring an awareness to crime prevention and local law enforcement efforts. And whereas, Night to Unite supports the idea that crime prevention is an inexpensive, effective tool in strengthening police and community partnerships. And whereas, Night to Unite provides opportunities to celebrate the ongoing work of law enforcement and neighborhoods in Cottage Grove by working together to fight crime and victimization, while increasing public safety for all citizens. And whereas, the citizens of Cottage Grove play an important role in assisting the Cottage Grove Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts. Now, therefore, I, and the I is not me, it is Mayor Bailey, and the city of Cottage Grove, do hereby call upon all citizens in Cottage Grove to participate in Night to Unite on August 2nd, 2022. Further, let it be resolved that I, again, Mayor Bailey, and the City Council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, Night to Unite in Cottage Grove. Signed this date, July 2022. If, of course, it passes, which it will. Yep.
All right. So we've got the proclamation, do I have a motion to?
How motion?
Motion by Councilmember Cambada, seconded by, it is he, Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dan, for reading that this evening and setting it up. All right. Next on our agenda is Consent Agenda Items, Consent Calendar, or Consent Items, I should say. Does anybody have anything they want to pull on consent? I have two that I'm just going to comment on. If no one has any, I'll just go right into that. One is, I just want to, one of the items I wanted to just comment on real briefly is, staff has been working hard to ascertain funds from different groups and agencies out there for purchasing land. And when I say purchasing land, I'm talking about for parks. And one of the, one of them that I think we all are very keenly aware of is that we are trying to additionally purchase land along the Mississippi River, and the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course area. And staff has received notice, as long as we accept this, this evening, for a DNR Natural and Scenic Area Grant Agreement with the city of Cottage Grove for $500,000. And I do know that we're working with the county to see if they'll match that with us, because there are some matching components, and we believe that that'll happen. And this will help us, again, purchase the acreage, the additional acreage that we want to add on to a future park down there. So I just want to acknowledge the staff, thank you for all those that were writing the grant applications and making that come to reality. The other one is Item D, which is Recreation Survey Results and Update. What staff provided us in our consent packet was really an overview of all the information that we received from the citizens of Cottage Grove over the, probably the last four months, five months or so. And the idea there was, we just wanted to hear from the public once again, what do you see within parks? What are you looking for, for the future? Is there anything we're doing today with it, if you will, other than tabulating? And boy, there was a lot of data, a lot of information in there. But I thought I would just share, just briefly with the public, what were some of the key takeaways that staff kind of took away, and some of them I thought were kind of interesting, in a, in a good way. So the categories kind of went into five. One was aquatics, two is buildings, three is what they call indoor features, four is outdoor features, and five is visual or aesthetic requests. And if you break that down a little bit further, where staff was getting information from the public, and under aquatics, it was in essence splash pads, sprinklers, which that was kind of cute, water slides, and a pool or man-made lake. In buildings, what they're talking about specifically in this case would be like a music band shell. Having some opportunities to use buildings in the winter, because there is some challenges with winterization. Creating a food truck park was another idea that came out of there. And then one that I thought was interesting too, that I hadn't heard of in Cottage Grove before, was a refrigerated outdoor ice rink, similar to the Oval in Roseville. From an indoor, indoor standpoint, our residents want more restrooms, not porta-potties, I thought that was cute. An indoor track, indoor fitness equipment, better accessibility for people in wheelchairs and with other physical limitations. Ninja Warrior course, we have heard that a little bit. Sensory features for all ages, like dirt tables, bubbles, water foam, and so on. And then from an outdoor standpoint, fitness equipment, which we're actually going to be providing something like that in Kingston Park, in a redevelopment thing we're doing there currently. More walking and biking paths, playground equipment for a variety of ages, access to the Mississippi, which I obviously just heard, we're working towards that. Outdoor grills, benches, community gardens, better accessibility, again, for people in wheelchairs and other physical limitations. Another dog park, a sledding hill, we heard the Ninja Warrior course, and then against the sensory, sensory features. And then visually aesthetic, one of the things that they said, and as somebody that was sitting and watching my grandson play baseball a couple weekends ago, go out in Lamar, if you didn't get there early enough, you, and you weren't under a tree, you were in trouble. So I was one of those that didn't get there early enough to get under a tree. So more trees for shade is on here, and that was not me that put that on there, but that is one that's there. Landscaping, or better landscaping with native plants, more flowers and plants for pollinators, and then more signs with historical information about the area. So, again, I really appreciate the, the amount of feedback that we got, and like I said, the data was. said, the data was so extensive and how, what people wrote, and for staff to kinda take what they, what the cust, uh, what our citizens were saying, I thought was very, very good. So, again, at this point, we're gathering all the data, kinda breaking it out, there's certain things, as I just mentioned, that we're gonna be able to already do, or are in the process of doing. Uh, there's other things that maybe some, something we'll be looking at down the road, uh, as options, but we do appreciate the number of people that participated in the survey, it was quite extensive. Um, so that's it. Um, if there's no other items for, uh, council to pull on consent, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So if you happen to be here for anything that's on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Uh, 8A, uh, is approved disbursement to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Olson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next is nine public hearings, we have one this evening, it's kind of a regular, I guess, but a fun one. Uh, it is the Church of St. Rita's Fall Festival Special Events Permit, and, uh, our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, will walk us through this one.
Thanks for having me back up. This is basically an advertisement for the Fall Festival, because they have been doing it so many years.
They have.
And it's so well-run, so, um, but they did apply for the special event permit, um, it's gone through the different departments, uh, we did send out for a public hearing, City Clerk Anderson, I don't think we had any, no one responded back, so, okay. Um, so tonight we'll be looking for approval of the permit. Um, I just kinda going through their application, just through, there's so many things to do at the Fall Festival, um, and it, it seems to work pretty well, the way they have it all, the layout and everything, so, public safety, we really didn't have any suggestions, but if you look at that list of things, there's, uh, something for everyone. I'm, I'm especially excited about the pig roast dinner, so, we'll, we'll be stopping by. Um, events are scheduled, um, on Friday, September 16th, from 4:00 to 10:00, the 17th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and, um, Sunday from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Uh, in the, in your packet, we had the special permit with the, the different conditions, and really nothing has changed from, from year to year. Um, it actually is a great location, cuz there are neighbors to us at the Cottage Grove Fire Department, so a lot of the things with additional parking and, um, uh, first aid and all that, it, it works really good with us, so. Um, we always, obviously, take the emergency preparedness plan very serious, and we'll go over that, and with everything that keeps changing in society, we'll make sure we have, um, updated plans and everything, but the church works well as a, a shelter if there are any severe weather. Um, same with the, uh, food sales, um, they usually, they get their permits through the county, and something new this year, and they're aware of, is, um, with any food trucks too, they need that annual license, so we'll work with the applicants as well on that. Um, they always get their, uh, for their, their tent off front, they get their permit for the temporary stage. Um, they do want live music, I, I think you guys are getting older, cuz it used to be 10:00 PM, now you're only going till 9:30, so, uh, but they're asking for the two nights, um, to have the music until 9:30, so, and they always have it tilted away, so it really doesn't affect any, any of the neighbors either, so. Um, tonight they did, that went through at the consent, so the, um, liquor license, um, same with the, um, gambling permit as well, went through tonight. Um, parking, there's times at peak where it gets pretty busy, but, uh, I think all the neighbors realize, for this one weekend all the year, people might be parked down the street, and again, we open up, um, our, our visitor parking lot at the central fire station. Um, we always, when we built that, they let us park over there, so, return in the favor, so. That's all I have.
All right, uh, council, any questions, uh, for Pete, or I know our, they're in the audience tonight, but they, they've been here many times before. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, um, is there anybody that wants to speak on this item? Is welcome to do so. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll look for a motion.
A motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, guys, good luck.
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
Another year good. All right, uh, 10 is bid awards or aren't on this evening, 11 is the regular agenda items, and we do have two, and I do know that there's many a people that are excited about this first one, uh, cuz, and matter of fact, our current senator, I think, is one of them that's extremely excited about this one, but, um, A, on our regular agenda is Duncan, Baskin-Robbins Conditional Use Permit and Variance, and Emily Smiths from our Planning Department is gonna take us through this one, so welcome, Emily.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bailey, members of the council. The next item, as you mentioned before you, it's a conditional use permit and a variance request for the building, uh, most of you are familiar with, located, um, I, the northeast corner of 80th Street and Hemingway Avenue. The building's been there for quite some time, from our records, we can tell, sometime around 1970. Uh, multiple tenants over the years have been, uh, in the building, insurance companies, massage, uh, therapists, things of that nature, um, but certainly in need of a little bit of a facelift. So the proposal before you this evening, um, is a conditional use permit to allow for a drive-through on the northern portion of the building for a Dunkin' Donuts, uh, slash Baskin-Robbins. Um, they would use the existing access in and out of the site, so no adjustments there, um, and then some industrial site improvements that we'll talk to us a little bit more in detail as we move along here. Um, but important to note, the parking and the stacking, again, that Duncan, um, Baskin, uh, joint venture, uh, the business model is focused on the drive-through aspect, there will be, uh, several interior tables, uh, but it's my understanding, the focus, of course, is the drive-through, so as you can see, the way that the site plan has been orientated allows for that stacking, of course, our code minimum of six stacking on the site. This proposed flow also allows for some potential additional stacking to keep that onsite, as opposed to, uh, flooding out into the public right of way. In addition, the applicant is also proposing some screening on that north end with some potential redevelopment opportunities and to the parcel in the north, um, that fencing will allow, of course, for just a little bit of a buffer. Um, of course, we would always look for some landscaping, um, but just given the site, uh, as it is, it's a little bit tricky to fit all of that in there, so it will still, uh, serve the purpose. The variance request that I had mentioned is for the dumpster enclosure, there's currently no enclosure on the site, um, so with the redevelopment or the, the refab of the site, excuse me, a dumpster enclosure will be constructed, so the applicant, of course, has found the area on the site that keeps it, uh, most visually appealing, for lack of a better way to put it, keeping it away from 80th Street, tucking it in the site the best that they can, um, given the parking lot does extend currently all the way to each property line, it's what we would consider to be legal non-conforming, and so placing that dumpster enclosure on that property line, um, certainly aligns with, uh, a variance request and their practical difficulty on the site. Those materials will in fact, of course, complement, uh, the, uh, the building itself, those colors will mesh and match, um, so it will really, uh, blend into the site. Those couple of other items on the site that they're planning to improve, one includes the monument sign, as you can see in front of you, the existing, um, is tired, I think that's the word that I'll use, so, uh, the applicant is looking to, uh, utilize the existing base, um, but bring the sign, um, uh, just, uh, fancy it up a little bit, for lack of whatever way to put it. I know they are hoping to, uh, kinda use some of the same materials as the Grove 80 sign across the street, to blend the two, uh, redevelopment sites together. And then some additional exterior improvements, uh, looking to paint the building, create some more storefronts, um, for future tenants as you move to the southerly side, um, of the building, replace some windows and doors, um, add some canopies, things of that, that nature, so really bringing the site back to life. So with that, I'll leave the recommendation before you, I know Lisa McCormick, the applicant, uh, is in the audience, and she might be able to provide some more details, uh, on timing, her staff is here as well to answer any questions.
All right, before you go, we, uh, staff, yeah, uh, Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, so, so now, how much of this building, if we look at the, the frontage here, was it go over to the, uh, there's the door for the Baskin-Robbins, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, and, and then the next door over, is that like still an existing tenant, or are the existing tenants staying, or, or, well, how much of this building is Baskin-Dunkin using?
Mayor Bailey, Councilmember Thede, um, I believe it's somewhere around here, I'll look to the applicant, um, to verify.
And so it's intended then for there to be three other, three other tenants then?
Potentially. Excuse me.
So, so then, uh, the other door in the center, obviously, one of those doors that you have there goes into two different officer, or two different tenant locations?
It actually does right now, if I remember right, there is one, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. It's been a long time since I've been.
It has too, where the old, well, the old cable used to be in there.
Yeah, that too.
Any other questions for staff?
I remember the bulletin newspaper used to be in there, I used to go pick up my papers to deliver from there.
You're aging yourself again, Mr. Cambada. Uh, Lisa, did you wanna speak on anything tonight? I know I bugged you enough over the last year, I think.
Uh, Mayor Bailey, Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, this has been a while coming, and, um, we're excited to be at this stage, and the, um, the owner, the Duncan franchisee, asked that I convey his appreciation for staff support, for your support, um, but he had a planned vacation even prior to this, so he was, uh, not, he's not able to be here tonight, but asked that I convey that. Um, so basically, I'm just here to answer questions, I think Emily did a, a great job. The two, two of the, um, the, the, um, site improvements that we spent the most time on, aside from the drive-through, was of course the, the monument sign and the trash enclosure, and we did our best within the constraints of the site to, you know, improve to the extent that we could, to bring it closer to conformity, um, but I think we've got, I think we came up with a, a reasonable plan that works, so, but I'm happy to entertain any questions, or elaborate on anything that Emily presented.
Any questions, council? I guess the only one, and I'm saying this on behalf of, I think, our senator, when are you, when do they think they'll be open for business? At this point?
We're, we're hoping, you know, it, that's always a scary question to answer, but we're hoping, um, mid-fall.
Okay, perfect. I know with supply chain issues, I know that's been a factor for you, as well as another pizza place in town, that's trying to come to town, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're hoping this, this fall.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so council, unless you have any other questions or comments, the.
Here, I'm gonna move that we adopt Resolution 2022-105, approving a conditional use permit for a drive-through window and a variance to allow a zero lot line setback for a trash enclosure located at 7584 80th Street South.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson, do I have a second?
I will second.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
We're excited, we're very excited.
Oh, yes. All right, uh, our next item under regular agenda is CBD and cannabis interim ordinance, and our city attorney, Cory Land, is gonna walk us through this one, so Cory, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Um, I provided a, a lot of historical information for you, just to, to show you the roadmap of how we got to where we are today. Um, and even a month ago, I would've said I knew where we were and where things were going, until everyone realized that the legislature had thrown a curveball into their, uh, last-minute, um, adoption of, of a, a very large omnibus bill. Um, so, that law, uh, basically, um, defined certain CBD uses that contain THC that would be legally, uh, able to be sold in the state of Minnesota. It is a one of a kind, uh, there is no other state in, in the United States that has a similar law, and reasonable attorneys minds disagree on exactly how it can be interpreted and what can be sold and how it can be sold. So, many city attorneys in many cities are, uh, taking the same approach that we're recommending tonight, which is, we need to take it just a, a little bit of a, of time to study the issues, determine where these uses are appropriate, how they should be, uh, best monitored by the city if needed, uh, whether that be through zoning, licensing, or both. And so the only way to do that, there's a tool in law, uh, called an interim use ordinance, and it is a moratorium that just takes a timeout, so that the city can study the issue and then come back with appropriate regulations as it, as the policymakers feel are best suited for this community. So that's what we're recommending tonight, it is officially a 12-month moratorium, but it can be, uh, terminated earlier upon adoption of any regulations that you choose, or upon abandonment. If you decide that you don't wanna do anything at all, you can just terminate it at any time, but the maximum it could be in place is 12 months. Now, the effect that it has on existing businesses that are already selling these products, they can continue to sell in the same manner and volume and type that they are doing so today. They cannot expand, once this moratorium is adopted, nor can any new businesses choose to sell these products or open for business. So that is what a moratorium does, is it stops things in place today, so that things don't get bigger than you anticipate or than you expect, so that you can then put, put your appropriate regulations in place that you see fit, and have the community grow the way you want it to. So the recommendation is to approve this moratorium tonight.
Okay, uh, council, any questions? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Olson.
Thank you. I'm not sure who I'm gonna direct this to, so I'm gonna direct it to our city attorney, but you can feel free to toss the ball to whoever. Um, you mentioned that one of the, uh, benefits to the moratorium is it gives us some time to analyze, you know, what's really going on, how can we best monitor, et cetera, but you also said that anyone who is currently selling can continue to do so without any expansion of what it is that they're currently doing, um, and that the moratorium is intended to, uh, hit the pause button for anybody who, you know, may be a new individual who wants to sell. My question is this, if we pass this this evening, how do we, uh, first of all, know who's already selling, so that we can say, okay, we know retailer A, retailer B, retailer C are selling, uh, DEF are not, so that we can ensure, to your point, that they don't expand the use that they're currently, um, you know, engaged in? And then two, um, how do we communicate to the other potential retailers that they cannot put this product on the shelf, so to speak, um, until such time as we have, uh, a discussion as a council and, and put, uh, reasonable regulations, monitoring, methodology, et cetera, in place?
Um, thank you for that question, uh, Your Honor, members of the council. We actually have prepared a communication to be distributed upon, if this is adopted tonight, that will be distributed tomorrow, both by mail, and for those businesses that the, the city or the city staff is aware are selling these products, they will personally visit the sites, um, perhaps next week, once we're sure that everybody should have received a letter, uh, so that they can be personally informed how it affects their business. For those that we don't know they're selling, and I'm sure there are many, many types of businesses, whether it be retail, or it could be some kind of a service establishment, that is, has a little product line, uh, off to the side by their cash register. So we won't know about all of the businesses that are selling these products today, but all of them, or as many of them as we can, uh, send the letter to, uh, whether it be through the Chamber of Commerce, I'm not sure exactly what the mailing list that the city has, but we'll send it to every business that we can possibly think of that could be selling them.
Okay, Councilmember Thede.
And you kinda grabbed my, my question, cuz that's the exact same question I had. Um, and one other thing I'm thinking of is, what if, what if people just in town, you know, like, just start selling it, kinda like they sell stuff over eBay?
Uh, Your Honor, members of the council, as we become aware of them, we certainly would be, would contact them and tell them to just pause, uh, until we can figure this out, we're not telling, we're not gonna go in stealing people's stuff off their shelves, um, but if they open a business during this moratorium, we will inform them that they need to stop, and then, once they, again, once we adopt something, that's when the moratorium will stop.
I think the biggest thing, uh, real quick on this one, is that, um, there was no parameters or anything when this, when this got passed, and for the public, literally, uh, this could be sold almost, well, literally, anywhere. Um, there are certain things and, and parameters that we put into place in our community for not having two liquor stores next to each other, or not having, you know, adult uses in certain districts and things like that, and so the idea behind this is for us to, like you said, hit a pause button and to be able to actually set up an ordinance or a process, so that, um, should they wanna come in, and we're not saying they're not gonna be able to come in, we just wanna make sure that we're all, always aware of, you know, what are some of the parameters. There isn't even parameters in this, in this bill that was passed that talks about who can sell it, the ages, um, you know, uh, it's, I mean, I was kinda frankly surprised on how it came out, I'm sure you were as an attorney too, cuz normally there's some, you know, if, if somebody's in, you know, selling tobacco, there's a process and there's training and so on, same with alcohol or some of these other guns or whatever, uh, there isn't anything with this, but this obviously could impair someone's driving and so on, so we wanna make sure that we're keeping our community safe, and eventually it'll, it will, it'll be here, and, uh, we'll change, uh, the ordinance, but we also wanna make sure that, uh, there's very specific parameters in place, so. very specific parameters in place, so. All right, any other questions? So council, if somebody wants to take the, the recommendation?
I will make the recommendation.
Do you want to read it? Can you see it or no?
I'll, I'll just read it off the paper here. I've got it. I was thinking, you know, normally they're up on the screen, so I went and looked at the screen, and it was black. I had a similar moment to councilwoman, or also. I move to adopt staff recommendation that we adopt interim ordinance 1060 prohibiting the establishment of new uses or the expansion of existing uses related to cannabis and non-intoxicating cannabinoids, CBD sales, testing, or distribution for one year.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Kamada. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Corey, for the update. All right, now we're down to 12, which is council comments request. I will start down with Councilmember Kamada.
Requests, I have none, comments. I'm really looking forward to National Night Out, or Nighting Night, rather, and it's just, it's really encouraging, as we saw with the school district here, as we saw with our award ceremony at the beginning of our meeting tonight, how engaged and involved our community is.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that. I agree wholeheartedly. Councilmember Dennis?
Mayor, I'm going to yield my time.
All right, there you go. Councilmember Thede?
Actually, I'm good.
You're good. Councilmember Olson?
Just three things, mayor. Briefly, I want to thank the public for their attendance at this year's Fourth of July Celebration at Kingston Park. This is one of our favorite events to participate in as part of the Cottage Grove Lions Club, and, you know, we got there a little bit early to get set up, et cetera, and there were a few people ambling around the park, Kingston Park, and then, you know, there were some concerns about weather and what have you, so folks didn't really start showing up until, you know, closer to like 8:00 PM, but we had our most, what we like to consider successful event ever. And it was really impressive to see when the fireworks went off, that the entire park was just packed, including people who were in their vehicles up at the top of the hill there by the, by the middle school. So really, really neat to see that so many people came out, and it makes for a super fun event, number one, but number two, it speaks to, as my colleague, Councilmember Kamada, talked about, the strength of our community and the fact that people do want to engage and they want to participate. So thank you for that, and thank you for all of the staff members from our public safety team, public works team, et cetera, who gave of their time to make sure that the event went off without a hitch and we could execute the event safely. Secondly, I just wanted to thank our economic development director, Gretchen Larson, for taking the time to join me for coffee yesterday. It was yesterday, wasn't it? My days all run together. I really had a great opportunity to chat with Gretchen, and as you know, she's relatively new to the city, but she comes with just a wealth of knowledge and experience from working in municipal government for so long, and it was really neat to hear her philosophy on how to approach economic development, et cetera. And I'm grateful that you took the time to visit, and I also am grateful that we have somebody on our team with your attitude, your enthusiasm, your knowledge. You've really embraced the community in your time here, so thank you. And then last, just to expand, mayor, I want to thank our staff for all of the hard work and effort that they've been putting forth for months and months and months, but especially the summer months. You know, people don't see behind the scenes what goes on all the time, and we could spend hours and hours up here talking about all the different programs that are being executed right now through Park and Recreation, Safety Camp coming up with public safety, you know, Fourth of July event, Strawberry Fest, all the various development things that are going on, you know, your trip out to ICSC, which staff participated in. There's so much that is taking place that it just boggles my mind that our staff can keep up with the volume of work, and that is due in large part to the dedication that they have and their willingness to, you know, stay late when necessary, come in early when necessary, participate in different events and be present for ribbon cuttings and those kinds of things. We have got just a top-shelf city staff. It's the, it's the best team that I've seen in my time as a council member. And the culture that Jennifer has established through her work with the various directors and all of the line staff in all the various departments is just unbelievable, and our citizens benefit from that tremendously. So again, thank you to the staff. I know that everybody is up to their elbows in work, and you continue to do everything that you do professionally, you continue to do everything that you do with excellence. One of the things Gretchen told me when, when we met the other day is, you know, Cottage Grove doesn't do ugly, Cottage Grove doesn't do shabby, you know. If you've ever met Jennifer, you know that she's as close to a perfectionist as probably the world has ever seen, and the fact of the matter is, they deliver. They deliver, and they deliver in a big way, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Olson, and here, here, to your comments there. I think that's perfect. Only item, well, I technically have two, but the one item I want to bring up, and staff's aware, because I kind of opened myself up to this one. So as the public is very much aware, we have had some challenges in particular parts of our community with some XL power outages, some of them that were as long as 12 hours, some of them are down to, you know, flashes, if you will, or surges, some are three hours, two hours. But if any, if any of you that have been through it from a citizen standpoint or a business standpoint, I want to say, I'm sorry that that happened. It isn't the city that's having that issue, if you will. It's some challenges, it sounds like, that XL is having. And the reason I brought up, I kind of opened myself up, is because we've been having ongoing conversations with the groups at XL to get a deeper dive into what's going on and some of the perceptions that are out there, whether they're real or not. We want to know ourselves as a, as a community. So I did receive, as, I copied staff on this, so I put a message out on Facebook and said, you know, tell me, where do you live in the community and, you know, you know, how long is it out? Give me your address and so on. And I had north of 300 citizens reach out to me, and some of them gave me data, like they said from this moment, from this minute till this minute, some of them talked about extra surges. In some cases, which I started even myself starting to see a trend outside of the two main times that happened, that there are certain areas of our community that have had power outages up to four times in the last month, month and a half, which is just not acceptable. And I've seen the comments about our seniors, all of our senior facilities that we have in Cottage Grove all went out without power. On the one evening, it was for 12 hours, and, you know, that's a challenge. I do know a lot of our restaurants, I had over 50 businesses reach out to me that were affected by this, everything from Dairy Queen to even out Whispering Gardens out in Old Cottage Grove, which I don't know how that power thing is there, but it's, so the reason I'm bringing this up to the public is to let you know that the city and the staff, the council here, do care, and we are looking at a meeting with them, and they're going to be coming. I've requested, once I've provided them with this data today, they're going to do a deeper dive into the numbers, understand what's going on, see if there's, you know, infrastructure issues, if it's older infrastructure, is it, you know, what are, what's causing these things? So going forward, knock on wood, that we can minimize these things to what would be, you know, storm-level events. And that was the other thing I'll share with you, none of the citizens and the businesses that reached out to me totally were understanding, you know, if the storm comes, get it, you know? Power goes out every once in a while, tree falls down on a branch, they get that, but when you have these long-duration events, something's just not right, and we've got to figure that out. So I just want to let the council and, and the citizenry know that, thank you, first of all, for all the information that you provided to me, but also that XL will be before us at a future council meeting to give us their feedback, to go a deeper dive into this and tell us, you know, what they're going to do to make sure that these type of events are as minimal, if ever, in some cases, to make that happen. Councilmember Olson?
Just real briefly on your comments there, one thing I wanted to also add, I know you have mentioned this to me before, is that our former state senator, Katie Seadman, is part of the Public Utilities Commission, which, of course, regulates XL Energy, and I know the mayor's been in contact with her on several occasions about some of these issues. I just wanted to add that, you know, you're really pulling out all the stops, so I think the residents are very lucky to have you being actively involved in this, and I think we're going to get some traction.
Well, I believe we will get some traction, one way or the other. I'll just say that. That's, you know, it's unacceptable, and if I was living in these areas and my power was out for 12, 12 hours, or 10 hours, or four hours on multiple times during the hottest days of the year, it's just not acceptable. So we'll get, we'll get her fixed and make these things be an issue of the past. And then the only, well, actually, I do have one more thing as related to that, and it actually kind of pigbacks on a comment that staff was making. So I didn't mention, so I talked about over 300 citizens. I also mentioned, you know, 50-plus businesses, but I also talked with our public works director, Ryan Burfine, about what effects these power outages had on our, on our public work side of things. We had lift stations go down, we had water pumps go down, which, of course, means that we have to put generators up, which we'll do, obviously, if there's a storm that we do that. Our ice arenas went down, and matter of fact, so much, though, that the, the ice was truly melting and the white that's put in the ice and the color in the ice started coming to the top. So all of these things even affected us as a city and our citizenry in a variety of different ways, so I wanted to pose that. But the reason I bring that up is that also is another, you know, kudos to our staff. As soon as these things start getting happening, I know Ryan called me right away, our director of public safety, he was on the phone with XL, our, our staff was called out to, you know, make sure that, you know, if there's issues with stoplights, if there was issues with the pumps or all that. So again, just kind of another pigback on the, the staff piece of that. And then lastly, I'll just mention real quick, you know, we, I mentioned earlier about the fact that staff did a great job going after some money for open space. Now, we haven't gotten what I'm about to say yet, but it's starting to work its way through the, it made its way through the House, and that is, we have been really working hard, our staff has and our council, to find opportunities or pots of money, if you will, to help with projects within the city of Cottage Grove, and whether it's, you know, a future roadway infrastructure improvement in the shops at Cottage View, or in the case that I'm going to bring up right now, is, you know, we do know that we need to finish the last section, if you will, of Eightieth Street. And we were informed that in the omnibus bill, that there is money that has been directly allocated to the city of Cottage Grove. I'm drawing a blank on the number.
7.9 million.
7.9 million, that is in the, and it's passed the House, goes to the Senate, which we'll be obviously in touch with them like we have in the past, and that would be money that would be put towards the reconstruction and redoing of Eightieth Street and the East Point Douglas area that everybody loves so much. I think that area is only second to Jamaica and East Point Douglas, which obviously we are going to be doing next year. So we do witness and we do see these things. I just want the public to be aware that our goal is to try to help lessen the tax impact on you as residents and businesses, so our goal is to try to find these opportunities out there. And there is another big one that we're hoping, we're keeping our fingers crossed, on another significant road project, and if that comes, comes to fruition, I'll be more than happy to announce that. And again, I just want to specifically, because she literally called me, Representative Angie Craig literally called me to tell me that it, it was, it did make it through all of the, the House, or the House bill. And so we do appreciate all the work that she's done for the city of Cottage Grove. All right. Next on our agenda is a workshop, which is open to the public, which we will be doing in the conference room, am I correct? Training room, okay. And the three items, just for the public that might not be here, is, we are going to be discussing our interim water treatment plan, our utilities and engineering division building, and additional workspace for city health public safety. And then we do not have any workshops closed to the public, and we'll be adjourning once we're finished in there. So everybody have a great summer, and we'll see you all in August.